Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is the December meeting for the Valdosta County Zoning Board Appeals. Before we start, I want to explain how we operate so that we can keep up or you can keep up with us. I will call each case by case number and case name. Staff will come to the lecture and give us the meat of the request. We have it in writing that they submitted to us, but they will also do it verbally here for the record. Once staff has presented the proposal, then there will probably be questions and/or discussions between staff and members of the board or among the board. Once we are satisfied, we understand what's being requested, I will ask if the applicant or anyone else here possibly representing the applicant might want to come to the lecture to give us any additional information or any questions that the board may have. Once we've heard from that, if there are multiple people who support, we would like to know you are here. If you have nothing else to add, what you feel you need to have in front of us has already been presented, please don't give it to us again. Once we're satisfied, we've heard the both sides, then I will ask if there are any persons here in opposition or if any persons have questions concerning what is being requested. If there are multiple people, one person please come to the lecture and give us the information you'd like us to take under the dial. Again, there will probably be questions and/or discussions among board members or back-and-forth whoever is at the lecture at the time. If there are multiple people in opposition, again, please give us the information as concisely, completely as you can. If you are here in opposition or have questions and your question has not been answered or you feel like that information has not been brought to us, then come to the lecture and give us that information. Please do not hammer us time and time again with the same information we've already heard. Because of the number of people here, we may have a lot of opinions and we want everybody to get a chance to be heard, but don't hammer us with the same thing over and over. Once we have heard from both sides, we generally will render a decision here today. However, it is in the bylaws that if the board feels it prudent to put off for thirty days until next regularly scheduled meeting and takes information, information appears to be lacking or parties need to talk, we do have that right. Okay, we're going to make one change on the agenda. We're going to flip-flop. We're going to hear the Valdosta case first and then we'll hear the Lount County case. The first case we're going to hear is application two thousand eighteen dash oh eight, Tim Harris. Tracy, you have the floor.
Thank you. This application is requested in front of you is from Mr. Tim Harris. It's specifically for the case of a property of property zone public commercial. It contains a little form of patent acre located at thirty twenty six block. Zone public commercial also in an urban commercial corner of the property. Property contains existing construction and fast food restaurant with a couple of accessory structures as well as existing apartments. The applicant is in the process of renovations to several farm local KFCs. So when these claims came through, actually they had the first step before they submitted claims. We talked about the potential need for several variants. So when the claim came in, we identified three variants that this particular property needs in order to accommodate the proposed proposal. There's the second variant. In the section, Ashley and Patterson are commercial property owners. The proposed cycling is a little bit different than what is existing. They're proposing to add some curbing that will take away two parking spaces, decreasing the parking from thirty-three spaces to thirty-one. That's the first variant. Your second variant is the impervious cap. It's also public commercial, which most of our commercial districts have a maximum impervious cap. For public commercial, the maximum cap is seventy-five percent. So this particular parcel, it would be, actually they are eighty-five impervious with a total impervious surface of twenty-three thousand three hundred ninety-nine square feet. They're going to add about nine hundred thirty square feet of impervious, bringing them up to eighty-three point four percent from eighty to twenty-four point four. That's three hundred and twenty-nine square feet. So a slight increase in impervious. The last variant is to set back for an accessory structure. Currently, they have two accessory structures and they are proposing to remove one of those and move the second one slightly. The repeated accessory structure is sitting at a slant to the northern property line. The closest point would be one point seventeen in the northern property line. The other corner would be two point eight fifteen in the property line. The requirement for accessory structures is ten feet. So they're asking for variants for that. Three variants is slightly increasingly not conforming in each circumstance, but it's going to add circulation benefits to the law. So staff reviewed it. We are being supported to improve the circulation on an already tough law. So we are supported and by community. Any questions?
You want to have any questions?
I have just one question. How close is the accessory structure currently to the property line?
I don't know. But I'll wait and see if there's any questions.
Anybody else have questions, discussions?
Traffic has looked at this?
Yes. And here it is.
Any one of us? Thank you very much, Tracy. Mr. Harris, would you like to give us any additional information or be willing to answer possible questions?
Thank you, absolutely. Thanks for having me. Thanks for listening to our request. I am obviously the paper of the request. My name is Tim Harris. I've been in business here, we've been in business nineteen sixty-five, and we're trying to improve the flow of traffic at that case so you can drop through a portal. If you ever try to get in on the national street or coming off match and you end up trying to get along, just somebody ends up hanging out in the national street blocking traffic there. This should completely alleviate, excuse me, alleviate the traffic issue. They'll also, the speed service and our channel as well. Excuse me. As far as the distance, currently, the current smaller sheds, well, actually moving in, lots of two and a half feet, three and a half feet, depending on the water from the property line. So if it's the shed that I will be moving, the one that is to be moved is two feet, that puts a little more pressure to the property line. Are there any other questions?
Anyone have questions? I think pretty self-explanatory. From the application, it appears that there really is nothing going to be done much to the building, it's going to be found out in the next year.
That's correct. We're in the process of remodeling outside of that property, that restaurant has a right now, but it has nothing to do with certain part of the property that has a mound.
They have submitted claims that included both the sod renovations and in here in your report from your motions. I will say to sign off on that, but I would be unable to sign off on the side.
No problem. Thank you. You wanted it in minutes.
So Tim, you're putting a second driveway? Is it going to be two lanes of traffic?
Correct. And exactly what we're doing that. Maybe the location would get an entrance and an exit kind of on the south end of the Ashley Street side of the line. And that's an entry and an exit. We're going to close that down and then we'll be in a case of, on the north end of the line, on Ashley Street, there is an apron there already. We're going to open up that apron and actually, we didn't deal in there where it was currently, but that apron will open up and then the lane will go around the back of the building. And then you will get in the drive-through line more hard. And then if you get in the drive-through line, you will, you know, through the line, we're extending the maybe more, we go from the northeast corner to the southeast corner with that, you know, that is, takes over the, those two parking places. And in the business, fast delivery, great service, everything, not everything, but more than we could use a drive-through speed. Right now, the drive-through is fast north because that can make it, like, you know, not for national match. So we're trying to help accommodate both of those with less and less people on the side, right, including between more and six seats, depending on how, how great it gets like that, because not as many people as I have.
Okay, so, so, I'll ask them too, that I guess will be the reason. You're not going to have two serving lines. You're going to have a little, little bypass or come around to get, so you still have one drive-through service.
That is correct. So in essence, if we all get the drive-through line, the justice speed is excellent.
Well, that was one of my questions, because I kept looking at it, trying to figure out how you were going to serve two.
Right.
But that is plain, that is plain. Okay. Anybody else have questions? Any other discussions? Is there anyone else here to support that feels like they have information we don't have and need to give? Is there anyone here in opposition to this request or anyone have questions about what is being requested? Was there any response to your office, Tracy? Ladies and gentlemen, any other questions, any discussions? We're being faced with a nine-space parking variance, an eight-point-four square foot variance to the impervious area from seventy-five to eighty-three point four. And we're getting, we're being requested for an eight-point-three foot side yard variance for the accessory structure. Can I get a motion from anyone on this case?
Make a motion and we approve the variance that's submitted?
Certainly. I have motion and I have, Mr. Holt, have a second. If you call me the motion, call in favor, please, raise a hand. You now, if you're lucky, I hope it all works out for you.
Thank you.
Okay. The next case we'll call is county case VAR twenty eighteen dash twenty. El and Victoria Thomas.
Mr. Chairman, I've got conflict potentially in this case and I'm going to abstain from voting.
For the record, Mr. Holt has a conflict and he just wants to abstain. Ms. Dever, it's your show.
Thank you, Chair. This is an application request from Mr. Joe Thomas and his wife, Ms. Victoria Thomas. Mr. El Sam, El Sam Thomas and his wife, Ms. Victoria Thomas. This property is located on James Lane, also known as, or formerly known as Jones Lane. This property is located at the end of this thirty-foot right-of-way. This is a twenty-plus acre tract, R eight, which is very important to our political government. Mr. Thomas is asking for a variance in section four point oh three oh six of the ULDC as it pertains to establishing a cemetery in Lount County. Mr. Thomas is asking, the variance requests are twofold. One is to table one of the six feet as it pertains to road frontage. The ULDC requires a minimum of two hundred feet of road frontage. This particular lot has thirty feet. The second area of this variance is the section four point oh three point oh six G as it pertains to access. The ULDC requires that use is established on a collector and interior for state highway James Lane is designated as a locally controlled road. The TRC gave consideration to this request and the TRC is recommending denial based on a cemetery at this location appears to be out of scale and inconsistent with the existing development plan and inconsistent with the supplemental standards that are designed to address the changing of land use in that. And that's what I have.
All right. Thank you. Any questions, any discussions from the board? Thank you, Dever. Is there, is Mr. or Ms. Thomas here and if so, would you like to come to the lecture and give us any additional information or answer some potential questions?
My name is James Gordon. I'm here to speak on Mr. Thomas's behalf. This is Ms. Thomas here and I'd like to introduce yourself and I live in, my name is, one of three South Washington streets within Georgia, Cleveland, or Gray.
And for the record, your relationship is your legal or not?
I'm not legal. I'm just a friend in the cause of the law.
Okay. Good enough.
My name is Bill Sam Thomas Senior and I live seven oh one upstate of your own and I'm one of Washington's cemetery owners. And I pray to God I can believe today that this cemetery will be grand, be open for the people and for everybody, not just black, white, Chinese, Mexican, and Hispanics, for everybody. And have a real nice cemetery. And I don't see nothing wrong with the cemetery. All cemeteries in Lount County are that for, Sunset Park, they ain't no more graves actually. Someone will go and be murdered or killed unexpectedly. People running everywhere trying to find, ain't got no one there. And if you're a member to the church, got a little cemetery behind the church. You can't be buried at the church because you're not a member of the church and we really, um, big cemetery. And it's going to bring by five jobs for people to everybody in Lount County, maintain, keep the grass, keep the clean and everything. I have other gentlemen here speaking to me, have on the cemetery and I really, you know, we all got to go one day. We, we're going to two times, we're going to leave here and we don't have to have a brick, so we got, we got nine square feet.
All right. Okay, so what I'd like to do is give you some information. I know Dever covered the variance request very well, she covered it completely. What I'd like to do, first of all, I would like to say that the ULDC is a complex code and I have a lot of experience with zoning, with land use and that sort of thing. And I had studied and looked it up and looked up the sections and I have access to that through my, you know, through Google and through computers, stuff like that. I would dare say that someone like Mr. Thomas who bought this piece of land on the Fort Mout steps from a tax sale and who found out that one of the potential uses would be for a cemetery that he could use the property for, that I don't think that anyone would expect him or anyone else who doesn't work in planning, zoning, or land use, or who's not a land use attorney or a real estate developer would know that the property has to meet some special codes in addition to just the fact that it is permitted in the rural agricultural zone area. So I would say that, first of all, that in a way, there is a hardship formed because the general public may know that a piece of land can be used for a particular use, but they're not, there, when you buy a piece of property, it's a special, there's no way to know ahead of time what special criteria that you might have to meet.
But if you're speculating and you're buying land, it's up to him to know what he can and can't do before.
It has.
And that's, that may be underlying, but that's.
It is, but I would dare say that anybody probably on this board would know all the conditions of a particular piece of property without having to go and study this in the ULDC. And I would dare say the public doesn't even know what the ULDC is for the most part. I know you all do, you have experience, it's commonplace to you, but to the public, it is not commonplace. And so that is, that is one of the, and looking at the review criteria for ranking of variants, this particular property meets, if not all of them, it meets many of the criteria. I don't know if you all have studied this, it was on the table that I picked up on my first CME and I looked at this particular property in relation to that. And so I do think it very much, and if you want to look at that, it very much suits those codes. In the rural zoning district, in the residential agricultural, which this property is located, there's twenty-one particular uses of property that are available in that zoning category. Five of them are permitted without any special codes, sixteen of them require special codes. Of the available uses in this particular zoning category, it's, for instance, manufactured homes, there's structural care homes, there's daycares, there's agricultural uses that would be used for livestock storage, all kinds of things like that that would bring a heavier use to the land, it would bring continuous traffic throughout the day, it would bring noise or pollution. The proposed cemetery is going to be park-like, it will be a peaceful place. The name that he's kind of thinking about using is called Peaceful Oaks Cemetery, planting some oak trees, having some areas of rest and reflection in the cemetery. It will have a buffer all the way around the cemetery, it will be fenced in, it will not create any pollution or any noise. It will have people coming in groups to have a funeral, of course, but it would not be an everyday thing. It will be open from ten to five on Monday through Saturday and closed completely on Sunday for no services at all. And it will be a restroom, water available there, an office, and it will be a park-like setting that will be maintained and it will be, it would be a nice addition, quiet addition to the neighborhood. So by virtue of the way that the road and the aliens is the property, the two hundred foot frontage is not possible because of geographic lands. So that's one of the requests right there. And the other one, the other request that Dever was referring to is that the road is a plain, it's not a large enough sized road and that, there is no control over that. I don't think that, that the regular citizen would know the difference between the different types of roads and streets or whatever in the city of the county.
He's a regular citizen.
While I believe, while I believe, as you, as you saw, it's all zone residential, agricultural, the proposed use is going to be a park-like, private cemetery, you know, as Mark said. So I don't think that there's any detriment to the neighborhood or to the families in the neighborhood or the property itself.
All right. Thank you very much. If, hang on, sir. Any questions, any discussions?
I got a quick question. What is your plan to handle large amounts of traffic when there's a funeral procession or a burial occurring? What would you do about large volumes of traffic coming out there at one time? How do you handle that?
That's probably a very good question that I would not say that I have addressed that particular question. Normally, you do have law enforcement that brings, that brings groups out in funerals, they control access, they, you know, flash the lights, they run ahead and they run after. So I would just have to say that law enforcement would have to help. There's only about ten houses on the. all kinds of things like that that would bring a heavier use to the land. It would bring continuous traffic throughout the day, it would bring noise or pollution. The proposed cemetery is going to be park-like, it will be a peaceful place. The name that he's kind of thinking about using is called Peaceful Oaks Cemetery. Having some oak trees, having some areas of rest and reflection in the cemetery. It will have a buffer all the way around the cemetery, it will be fenced in. It will not create any pollution or any noise. It will have people coming in groups to have a funeral, of course, but it would not be an everyday thing. It will be open ten-five on Monday through Saturday and closed completely on Sunday for no service at all. And it will be a restroom, water available there, an office. And it will be a park-like setting that will be maintained. And it would be, it would be a nice addition, quiet addition to the neighborhood. So by virtue of the way that the road and the additions to the property, the two-hundred-foot frontage is not possible because of the geographic lands. So that's one of the requests right there. And the other one, the other request that Deborah was referring to is that the road is a plain, it's not a large enough sized road. And that, there is no control over that. I don't think that, that the regular citizen would know the difference between the different types of roads and streets or whatever in the city of the county.
He's a regular citizen.
Well, I believe, well, as you saw, it's all zone residential, agricultural. The proposed use is going to be a park-like, private cemetery, you know, as Mark said. So I don't think that there's any detriment to the neighborhood or to the families in the neighborhood or the property itself.
All right, thank you very much. If, hang on a sec, any questions, any discussions?
I got a quick question. What is your plan to handle large amounts of traffic when there's a funeral procession or a burial occurring? What would you do about large volumes of traffic coming out there at one time? How do you handle it?
That's probably a very good question, that I would not say that I have addressed that particular question. Normally, you do have law enforcement that brings, that brings groups out in funerals, they control access, they, you know, flash the lights, they run ahead and then run after. So I would just have to say that law enforcement would have to help. There's only about ten houses on the road, so there's not like, there's not a planned development.
I'm really wondering, like, where do you plan to park everybody? I mean, is there gonna be sufficient parking to keep everybody off of, off of the road?
Sure, the cemetery, there's, if you look at, I don't think that the staff show a particular, I don't know if it's in your packet or not, but this is a plan that was done by a surveyor that shows that there's two-lane driving all the way around, there's parking here, there's parking here, and parking here, and the car is in fact only fake areas between the lots.
Do you have any idea?
This is twenty-three acres of land, and there's fifteen acres of land right here that's not even used. It could be made into a parking area if that turned out to be necessary.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just wondering, are you confident that you, you have a plan in place to keep traffic from backing up on it?
Oh, the traffic will not be on the road at all. It's gonna come in here, this is the big loop right here. And here's a paved two-lane loop all the way around the cemetery, plus these driving lanes all the way through the plot down land. So it's definitely, it's a huge piece of land, if you go out there, it's twenty-five acres of land. So there's plenty of area. And there's a whole section left completely undeveloped. So there's plenty of area, and it's all cut clear and open land at this point.
Any other questions, discussions? Is there anyone else here in support that would like to give us any additional information we don't already have?
My name is Julia Mitchell, and what I'm here to say...
Could I get your address, please, ma'am?
I'm for the two months. I'm just here to say that there is a need for a cemetery, it's moving on. My family started out with the Joneses Cemetery. And now, when I go out there, even though they've added, because we turned it into a park area after our woman died.
Please address to here.
Then it was a lot of it. And now that there's no more Sunset, everybody's going to park area, and it's feeling real. They're really, it isn't anywhere else, but it's a small cemetery on clay road. It's just established and it's all ready, you know? And there's nowhere to put it, and everybody will want to create it, and it's a need. And the need will be greater, and I think everyone who gets a reach with it now will start agreeing with it when it is no more ready, and what right now...
Please, the audience.
The urgency is not there, so it's not...
All right. Is there anyone else in support that would like to give us any information we don't already have? Is there anyone here in opposition that would like to come to the podium, please? One at a time, one at a time, and please do not keep hammering the same stuff to us time and time again. You'll have a chance to speak.
My name is Dorian Carter, I live in sixteen oh nine Jefferson Court. That man, the man, my family, that man's been in my family since before me. This has been a lot of kids raised back there, a lot of racist kids raised right there. And I don't think the kids wanna, they don't wanna be, they don't wanna, they don't wanna be lived for once. So they don't even see what's going on in that group. It's a lot of children. It's, you know what I mean, nobody wants to walk past a graveyard at nighttime. Those kids are involved in sports, in the evening time, they get out the bus late at night, six o'clock, so it's dark out there. My kids don't wanna go out there, and that's where all, everybody out there has grandchildren. And all the grandchildren come there in the summertime. They don't wanna deal with that. That's all about a second.
Yes, sir, could I get your name and address for the record?
My name is Richard Wilson, I'm a lawyer, my office is at one oh six East North Street. I represent several of these folks here that live in and around this property, mainly along this bottom side of the street here and up along the right side of the street. What they have failed to tell you in all this is that this piece of property, well, one, I'll address some of the things that they, that they went to first. He advised this piece of property for a cemetery, so the fact that it was some mistake, that he doesn't know any kind of zoning area, you know, he can't be charged with knowing the roads and all, he didn't buy, bought and build a house out there. That's what he's told every one of these people that lives around here.
Please, audience, please.
So that's a, that's a farce, and, and, and most, most all of this is a farce, okay? He wants to put a cemetery out there, because as of right now, this piece of property is in litigation, okay? He doesn't care about zoning laws, he doesn't care about planning, zoning, any of that stuff. He has, he cut, he cleared out about a two-acre spot of other people's land running out the backside. This road coming out the back was all...
Sir, that's, that's something not before this board.
Well, it is before this board, it is pertinent that this, and this piece, and this piece right here...
No, sir, if he cut trees that were not on this property, then that does not affect us on this board, that's...
Well, there's an easement also that goes with this property that is his, that is before this board. If we're talking about twenty-three acres that they're talking about. I'm talking about, because what I'm telling you is, and what you're gonna find out when you, I'm trying to give it to you in a succinct fashion, rather than have fifty people come up here and tell you in an insincere fashion. So I'm trying to give you the whole story, all right? This man is doing this for the simple, this, this, this piece of property is in litigation right now. The easements in and around it are in litigation right now. He is actively being sued about it, okay? That is pertinent to this, all right? He's doing this out of pure spite and harassment. That is exactly why he is doing this. And the short answer is, he needs all these, that's not a place for a cemetery. It's at the end of basically a paved two-pack. The thirty-foot of road frontage is, I mean, that, there's no way that there's thirty-foot of road frontage. It did, I mean, there's a, there's enough room for me to pull my pickup truck right there at the end and hang a rock. That's the road frontage, that's the paved road frontage, okay? There's all of this down to the right, I mean, there's no parking out there. It's wet, it's underwater, if you go, I mean, there's, I mean, I, I, I was out there today, I got stuck. One of these residents had to pull me out in a four-wheel drive truck. And he, when he's talking about the parking and all, that's, that's impossible. And you're gonna put dead bodies in a, in a wet, a wet area like that? I mean, that's the other, that's the other part, is the environmental part. And these are people living out there, that is, those are all family. And he didn't do any research, just like he told you when he went in here today. This man that came to spoke to him, that's the bottom line, he didn't do any research when he bought it. He didn't realize he bought in the middle of all these families. And then he's trying to run them out of there, he's trying to run roughshod over everybody. And he's being sued about it, and so he's gonna do the next thing that he can think of, spitefully, to try and deal with these people, and he's trying to pull it open on y'all that he wants a nice place for a cemetery. I'm giving you the real story, don't, don't bring these variants. It's, it's, all it's, all it's gonna do is cause more problems. That's, I mean, and there's, they've given no good reason for any of it. And, and, and it's already been recommended, that it's been, that it's been denied, and most of this room agrees with that. And all that's been done.
All right, sir, hold, hold on, hold on.
Are there any questions for me?
Any questions, any discussions? I got, what kind of litigation's going on? What, who's suing whom?
There, Ms. Ronda Wright and her husband Vernon Wright. They live in this mobile home that's on the backside of this property. I mean, on the, on this right side, right on this property line, okay? There's an easement, there were two easements. One that ran right through, which it looked like on that picture that he had, was maybe, maybe the old easement. If you, if you went straight down that lane there, it would go right through the middle of his property. And that's the way that Ms. Wright and her family used to get to their property, okay? Once that happened, he closed that off when he bought it, closed the one off to the middle. So everybody is using the one around the side, going to the property and hang a right and go around. Well, he decided that he was going to open up an unused easement. This is Mr. Thomas on his own, decided he was gonna open up an unused easement on the back end of the property. And so he cut a runway, basically without their permission or knowledge, cut a runway down, down the other side, and then closed off the front piece, okay? Which has been in existence for seventy-five, fifty, seventy-five years, which, and so we're in litigation not only about the use of the easement, which comes in that front place where he's talking about, that road frontage. And right there, you know, to the right, that's all, all that, all that front piece of that property is, is currently in litigation. And plus, obviously, the damage that he caused to the property on the back end without permission. If you go out there, bottom, part of that on the backside is, is wetlands. I mean, they, they basically, there's probably some environmental issues that also occurred by cutting that new driveway or, or new easement that he decided to cut through there. And I'm, I'm not talking about a, I'm not talking about a slip. I'm going out as two-hundred, three-hundred yard, fifty, sixty-foot wide pack, clear cut, straight down. I mean, he probably spent thirty-five thousand dollars of his own money to do this without the landowner's permission. And it still failed because it's wet and it's currently underwater right now. And so it's all of that on the front end of that property and around the side of the easement, and on the end, into his side of property. I mean, only into his property. It's soaking wet out there, and that's not just because we had ten ranges, ten inches of rain this weekend. That's because it's been that way for the last year, year and a half, two years since we've been in this litigation.
I've got a question for you, is Gaines Lane, is it paved?
It, it is, it is paved.
It's concrete, asphalt?
Concrete, it's not asphalt.
And then when it gets to the property, it's dirt?
Dirt.
Dirt?
Dirt, dirt and water.
You hang a right, and you go south, and then the...
That's the easement, so when you get on there, there's, you hang a right, go down, maybe fifty, seventy-five yards to the right, and then you hang a left and go back up.
Yeah, and that's, that's all dirt, right?
Yes, yes.
Is that underwater right now?
Yes. I mean, I can, I can show you a picture on the phone if you, I mean, that I took.
I can go get a picture of my cousin's car right now, he's just there. Just got pulled out.
That's my approach, that is, that's Gaines Lane, I mean, that's not Gaines Lane, that's right there.
That's down here? Where is it?
That's, that's right there.
Where is it, was it...
That's right here. This is, this is, that's the top end of this property, so to the right of this cemetery, that's, that's the property on the top here. That's my, I mean, that's, when you turn the, that's over, that's right here. Along, that's all this, all this is there. That's the little driveway, that's my side, right, that's my side right here. And it's...
Please, please.
That's, that's all along the side here.
Can we see the picture down here, please?
Anything else I can try to...
Any other questions, any others?
What's in there? Don't forget about the petition.
The petition.
And they do have some, a petition that they passed, and, uh... Signed here, I don't know, uh... It's got a little weather every time it's moved, they're rid.
Any other questions and discussions for the gentleman before we... Okay, as soon as they get through, they'll send it down their direction. Is there anyone else here that would like to come to the lectern? I need your name and address.
My name is Ronda Wright, I live at two four seven one nine one. My husband and I have seven boys out there. Right now, not even just with the ten inches of just guys, on an average rainy night or day, if we can't get out of our driveway, we will have, which is what Mr. Thomas opened with our permission. We are unable to call the school to tell them that he has had a cemetery. I mean, we have no other way to get out, and frankly, now we're getting to the frame, we have the, we have a suburb and the warmen to the window, I mean, kind of driving attack. Guy Cole has told us that we have more road practices to help for them to be told. So we have to enlist just the two of his services if he's a veteran. There are no paved roads, he has seven people being taken, he opened up, made up, I don't know what, how long the road is, um, again, with our permission, and we can't get out that way either. Before we even put a home over there, the county zone is, I don't know, a small water area, it's too wet to live on. That's the part of the property that he cut off, so now that part is under water. Even if we did try to use the road that he was using, it's not over.
And that's the dirt road on the south side?
Uh huh, and the easement that he cut off, um, we, it was, we could get away there for a school if it was raining or whatever, because it was not underwater, but now we can have that for sale.
I was out there yesterday and drove all the way down around to where the lane turned back north and built up, and I turned around and came right back down.
And my main concern is, give them this school for nobody, let them have.
I understand. Any other questions or discussions? Thank you, ma'am.
Bill Boss, I live in twenty-two oh seven Zalando Drive here in town. I have the property that, to the, looking at this to the left of the section, off the, about four lots right there. Those five lots have been in my neighborhood for, I guess, purchased in the early, late seventies, early eighties, maybe somewhere on that long time. They had cleaned off all that when they were, now there's four mobile home lots on there. The road is not concrete, Council. It's, it's an asphalt.
It's an asphalt road.
And it's about that thick. It's not up to catch sand. They have to repair it virtually over, so it cannot handle any traffic. So that's, I just wanted to get that fact out. The, the problem is, is this is not zoned for this specific use. And no one here wants it zoned for this.
Well, sir, again, it is an allowed use if it fits the criteria, and there are some criteria that it doesn't fit.
It doesn't fit. All the people that live out there, this is, if you take a look at the lots that are out there, that's, it's a residential community. It is not a commercial piece of property. It can't handle the traffic. And second, or last of all, or third of all, or fourth of all, if you're gonna deal with a person to do a property like this, we need to make sure that the person that you're dealing with has honesty and integrity.
All right, let's, let's don't get into the...
It has to do with, with what's happened out there in the past and what's continuing to happen. Now, I'll say this, if you talk to Ashley Hall, our sheriff of Limes County, he will tell you, and he said it in a court case not too long ago, that he had no trouble out there till that L. Thomas bought us one.
This is, we're getting into hearsay, we're getting into stuff that no one...
This is not hearsay, this is a court of law, a criminal case.
The sheriff is not here to tell us that.
Okay, but it can be verified. It can be verified. That's what I'm telling you. I'm not doing hearsay. What I'm telling you can't be verified.
Anything else?
Now, we have, I have residential lots. It is going residential. The highway can't sit. If he can cut a road out to the main highway and get you your two-hundred-and-fifty-foot easement, then that's a viable alternative. You can't do, it's locked. He has one road in, it's Gaines Lane, and it destroys the community. And this board and this town is not in the business of destroying communities. I do wanna thank John Holt for excusing himself in this, because John Holt is a, and it does have a serious conflict of interest in this. And, um, I hope the board takes a look at this as a whole piece of business and says this is not the right thing to do. I've been turned down before, and it's not fun to come down here, but when it's wrong, you're wrong. Thank you.
Yes?
I have to leave. Daniel.
And Charles on side?
Um, can you put the area? The pool, that pool, all the way across this side. Um, we also have seven children and moved to a residential agricultural area to raise them in that atmosphere. Um, we also just wanted to be home a year and a half ago. This will significantly reduce our property value. Uh, my cats also live in this corner. They also just moved in home. There are, uh, two other new homes, uh, one on Dasher, one on Gaines. A, a huge, at least a five-odd-inch square feet of building built, um, and they live in there. Um, they're not gonna let that traffic come and ride over any home. They also have six children that will be playing in the street right there. Um, the intersection itself, where you're coming out of the intercooler, is already congested. There's accidents there a, a place once, it's ever so sometimes because, because of it. Um, that intersection cannot handle that kind of traffic.
All right.
And I, I would agree with that, I mean, going back, and I mean, he said he has fifteen acres of undeveloped land, it's not even his land, so, you know, that's, but, I mean, you have to get access to that property. Looking at, you know, having to accept that amount of parking to have on that for a cemetery, the amount of room that would take to turn around, I know he got a little plan drawn, but there's just, I mean, mathematically, it's probably impossible. You get a hundred cars going through there at one time. It's just gonna be a nuisance to all the residents of the streets, you know, they're not gonna be able to get in and out of their houses, you know, like I said, I know it's closed on Sunday, but what about the rest of the time, you know, there's people that, you know, have to get in and out, and they're waiting for a funeral procession to get ready, and everybody's been to a funeral, and we've, and we know that, uh, how long it takes to get everybody grouped together, get in and out, and it's just gonna be a nuisance for everybody going in and out there, so.
All right. Any questions, any discussions? Thank you very much.
I'm speaking from a health standpoint here. This is swampy. I have three point three acres there. I can't be moved on it because it's swampy. You cannot put bodies in swamp land, what they are, they're gonna rot. Would you want to run here, your family would have to do it. This is something that the health has. You cannot put that out here. That's what it has to bother down for all the company. This is the reason why the working people are helping us, you know. You cannot bury people in the ground in a broken condition and knock expensive bodies that don't fuck up. Just from that point alone, from a health standpoint, you have to shut this down. From that point of view, boom, this is the right thing to do. That's all I have to say. All right?
I'm in my property, twenty-four oh four, and I'm, I'm in, uh, Black Park, uh, easement, and, uh, I'm the one that bid on the property, both of them, yeah, play up there. And, uh, he said he wanted to build a house out there, and I was the guy that did it, you know. So, he, he come out here doing stuff, he did some, yeah, he did, cut a road, and did probably go to mine, which cost mine, and cut the property off, road from Mrs. Chumler, Rhonda off, cut a road up, whatever, send this down. And we, only got thirty feet, everybody on our side, gave thirty feet, and we tried to deal with him, asked him if he'd give thirty feet, we could put, cut a piece of road out. He won't give nothing. And don't want to come talk, the easement, that was already there for us to get back there to our property. You know, he had me brought off for about, about a year, so, to the west coast, that I couldn't even come to there. Like, and he said, the sheriff hadn't come out there and straightened out before we, before we, before I, I come back to my own property. You know, back there, before he ended up, finished, run back here, that, that's, you know, the sewer called that, which he had no, no right to do. He didn't even know nothing on that side of the, of the lane. And he cut that, not, he couldn't get through there, so I had to break up, uh, a lot, a lot of blocks, and I had to dump stuff, all of mine, that way you can break them up, and fill it in the way I can get back and forth in. And it's, and, and over that, the block, the bridge and block that, we got in there, the water, it's still over that, but I can get through the whole block, the bridge. But, uh, boy, it's simple there. We don't need, it's ready, it's ready for my truck to, and that's right.
Any questions, any discussions? Thank you very much. Anybody else got anything that has not been brought to our attention for us to take under Ladies and gentlemen, any other questions, any other discussions? I get a motion.
I live out there.
Sir?
I live out there, and my, my, uh-
Sir, you had a chance.
My water supply, I'm walking with a cane, I don't want something. If you can, I'm standing, I'll come over.
No, sir. Make it fast, will you?
That's gonna be fast. I just wanted to say, my well, my water well, right off, right on the property line, so does my son and my daughter's water. I don't, I don't like to build a cemetery there with my well, when I'm drinking the water, I know.
All right, sir.
You understand what I'm saying?
I understand. Health property regulations say that the well has to be a certain amount of feet away from a property line.
Yeah, well, it's God, that's where they put it.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, I get a motion on this request. All right, ma'am. Would there be any contact with your office, other than everybody that was pretty much seen and heard from?
Yes, sir, Jim, we did see two phone calls in the bar as to what the proposals were.
Were there phone calls concerning what would the proposal use?
Yes, sir. What's going on, what is signed about?
Did they give you any indication where the labor?
By the minute ten in today, I believe that they are, yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm sorry, I addressed, I'm in the down-
No, no, sir, I'm fine.
Okay. I think you heard everything. Any discussions? Can I get a motion on this request?
I'm making a motion to deny the request.
A second. I have a motion on the floor from this quarter month. I have a second, Mr. Alvarado.
What?
Mr. Alvarado. All in favor, please raise your hand. Five oh is your count?
Five oh one.
That's right, this is Mr. Holt. Ladies and gentlemen, it has been denied at this point. Give it just a minute for all these people to do their part. Work the way you-